Hello.
Good evening. It is now six P M on Tuesday, July sixteenth, twenty twenty four. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the planning board. The planning board is a seven-member board. Any special permit decision of this board requires a two-thirds vote. Two-thirds of a seven-member board is five. If only five members vote, the vote would have to be unanimous. Any decision on preliminary and definitive plans, approval not required, and proposed zoning amendments requires a majority vote of the full board. Any decision on scenic road permits requires a majority of the quorum present. Any person giving testimony must state and spell their name and provide their street address for the record. All questions from the public should be directed through the chair. This meeting is live and streamed on Sandwich Community Television's website and on local Channel nine. This meeting is being recorded and will be available on the S C T V website at W W W dot Sandwich T V dot org tomorrow. According to town bylaw, meetings are audio recorded. If anyone intends to also record, kindly notify the chair. Please stand for pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So we'll move right into review and approval of minutes. The minutes are from April second, twenty twenty four, and April sixteenth, twenty twenty four, starting with April second. Does anybody have any comments? Seeing none, I will ask for a motion to approve the minutes from April second, twenty twenty four.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from April second, twenty twenty four.
Actually, do you have a question? And I'm sorry to stop the voting process, but since I wasn't present for the actual meeting, can I still participate in the vote? Okay, that's what I thought. I just want to be sure before I do that. So I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone object or abstain? Okay, and then any comments on April sixteen, twenty twenty four minutes? If none, I'll take a motion to approve those minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from April sixteenth, twenty twenty four.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone abstain or object? Okay, great. Next on the agenda is submission of new plans. Seeing none, we'll move on to old business, which is eight and ten Cranberry Trail Special Permit. Hey, John?
And I'm recusing myself.
Thank you. So with this one, I actually am going to recuse myself as well, and I'll turn it over to Melissa.
To read the public hearing notice again?
No, it's an open me. And just through the chair, just again, a quick explanation. The applicant and the office is seeking a continuation on this application because there are not enough voting members to vote on the application. You would need five, right, five votes. So.
Okay, I would ask for a motion to continue the special permit for eight and ten Cranberry Trail till the next meeting, which is August six. Six at the Sand Hill School Community Center.
I will make a motion to continue the matter of eight and ten Cranberry Trail Special Permit Application to the next planning board meeting, which is August sixth.
At the Sand Hill School.
At the Sand Hill School. Thank you.
Thank you.
I second.
Oh, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained?
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is new business. See any new business listed? So we'll move right on to board discussion. The first is request for comment number twenty-four dash fifteen seventy-six, Route one thirty and fifty-five, Chemical Pond Road, Comprehensive Permit, N S G Village Green dash one L L C.
To the board, as you know, this was before you on July second. The following Tuesday, the Zoning Board of Appeals had their, had the first public hearing on this matter. So just to let you know, you could discuss it tonight. You could put forward thoughts on it tonight, or you could wait till August sixth. The next meeting that they're planning on hearing this matter is the August thirteenth meeting. I know that there's a lot to digest with this comprehensive permit. And I know I had sent you a little note of things to think about, and I know that Leanne had talked to you on July second about it. There are several issues which are directly affected that's directly affected by the planning board. I'll go chief among them is the solar. After that is an A and R. After that is a scenic road. So they're asking waivers on that. And I think overall, they do comment on the housing production plan. The housing production plan is a responsibility of the planning board. Just to, if this comprehensive permit is approved, it would satisfy some of the targets in the housing production plan. And specifically, it would put us in, it's considered safe harbor for three years. So that means, you know, if anyone came before, put in a comprehensive permit application, and we didn't want to deal with it, we could reject it. We don't have to, you know, if it's a good plan, we'll still accept it. So those are the four major elements of this comprehensive permit that directly tie into the planning board. You could, you know, you can provide comment on anything that you've seen. But again, it would be helpful to provide direction on those elements to the Z B A. The attorney for the project sent me an email saying that if the board had any questions, he would be available to answer them. If I could provide my professional opinion, I don't think that's the best of ideas because really, the discussion, the back-and-forth discussion between the applicant should occur at the Z B A. Many of this board have been here, seen multiple presentations by the attorney and the applicant. So those are my thoughts. So if you have any questions, Leanne and I are here to answer anything as it relates to the comprehensive permit or any questions you have in helping you come up with providing comment to the Z B A.
I have some thoughts on that. One of the things that had come up at the July ninth meeting was that there were some materials provided to Sam, and they were not yet reviewed because they had just been provided. And I was wondering if it might make sense for multiple reasons, but particularly that one, to be able to hear what their review of those materials is before we do provide a comment.
It was for, it was for the stormwater, the stormwater report. So again, it's up to the discretion of the board and on how you want to deal with that. Sam is looking at that. And you probably have comments available for the next meeting in addition to Sam's comments. We're waiting on comments from the Cape Cod Commission. So the Cape Cod Commission is, in this instance, would be considered a local board. So they're reviewing the application as well.
It sounded like the counsel at the meeting for the Z B A was indicating that it may not be required to have the commission's input right now, but that it could be beneficial.
Well, exactly. So under normal circumstances, a project of this size would go before the Cape Cod Commission as a D R I, Development of Regional Impact. Because it's a comprehensive permit, it does not. So it's, again, they are acting as a local board similar, you know, similar to the planning board in your capacity in providing comments in that, you know, because it does, it would, under normal circumstances, qualify as a development of regional impact. They would provide comments in association with that. I would, you know, they would also provide com- I suspect that they would provide comments in relation to, one, traffic, two, water discharge, and three, definitely land clearing associated with the solar farm and possible offset.
Okay, yeah, I mean, it did sound like there was going to be fencing, and then what was going to happen with the areas around that? And then furthermore, to the pond area. So do we have any anticipation of how quickly that turnaround is?
From the Cape Cod Commission? No, it's, you know, as everyone here knows, it's, you know, it's a lot to digest, and I think they're looking at it. So they just requested to see the comprehensive permit last week. So, and, you know, I told them that August thirteenth, they will be hearing it, possibly hearing it again on August thirteenth. So I suspect sometime before then. We may have it by the August sixth Planning Board meeting. So when we have it, I will, as soon as we get it, I will forward it to this board.
And then I guess I have another question, which I'd love some guidance on. But so there was some discussion about the project eligibility letter and how that might need to be adapted to the new expansion of the project.
Yeah, so that was, so I had reached out to Mass Housing, and the Mass Housing is looking at the comprehensive permit as a minor modification to the project eligibility letter and that the applicants would not have to go back to Mass Housing to amend the P E L. So they said that they'll review, if a comprehensive permit is awarded, that's when they'll review it, and they'll review it for the conditions and also the ability to get financing. Because they're the financing agency, would be Mass Housing.
Thank you.
The next Z B A meeting is on August, remind me what year it is.
Yeah, the next meeting associated with the Village Green would be, is August thirteenth, currently scheduled, yeah.
And August sixth is our next meeting? Will that meeting definitely happen?
The August sixth meeting?
Our meeting, yes.
Yeah, well, yes, there was a continuation for eight, ten Cranberry to August sixth.
Okay, so we will be meeting on August sixth?
Yes.
The reason I ask is I don't think we should go beyond the next Z B A meeting without sending something in. We can always send in things multiple times as we learn more information. But I'm of the opinion that we should not go beyond that meeting when I'll send something in. Now, we can decide tonight what that is, or we can decide on August sixth. The, I think there, and I'll just give you my quick opinion with respect to the three items Ralph, you mentioned, that we typically get involved in. The A and R, I believe, you know, in our letter, we should comment that what we would ask the Z B A to do is to follow our process for, since they have the authority on this, but that to use our process as guidance. So our process requires on the drawing certain information, and we should ask them that they ensure that that information is provided as we go forward. So they're very capable of following our process. We have to discuss this, Ralph. I'm just.
No, 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 yeah, I'm just taking it outside.
Okay, I didn't want you to go forward because I'm not, I'm just one member. But there was a comment that maybe we want to wait for more information. I think we should send something forward. We can discuss it tonight or next week. But I was just going to give you my quick snapshot on the A and R. They're very capable of following our process. I think we should encourage them to follow it. And specifically, the information typically would be on the drawing. There was some comments made at the Z B A meeting that there was information missing. I can't remember who said it about the A and R. The second item you mentioned was the scenic roads. There was some discussion, you know, at the meeting, a little bit about one thirty access to this site and so forth. There was comments made about a turning lane. As I understand, this permit, you cannot make a condition of this permit that they have to do infrastructure improvements. So right now, all they're required to do, if they get this permit, is to have, you know, the entrances and exits that are required per their plan. If, you know, if there's concern about traffic, and it was strongly felt that a turning lane is required, that is something that cannot be imposed on them. They could volunteer to do it, and they have not volunteered to do it yet. The reason I go through that is that if that were to happen, there could be severe, you know, taking of scenic trees. You know, there could be a very widening of that road made. There could be high impacts of scenic trees. I think as we go forward and we hear more Z B A meetings, and we hear more about what they're going to do, we can be more specific. At this time, as I looked at the plans and from what I understand, we should encourage them, like the A and A, is to follow our process, particularly the one and a half, that for whatever, every tree that's taken down that they require, that they put back one and a half, either on that property or elsewhere, as we allow applicants to do. And with respect to scenic road, I would encourage them that they employ the assistance of the tree warden. So, you know, I would, it would be in my opinion that we should specifically spell that out. Follow our process, and please take note of these two items. One is all trees to be replaced with at least one and a half, and engage the services of tree warden to identify the types of trees, where the trees should go, and so forth. He's very knowledgeable, very well. I think the one that, in my mind, the one that we can send some comments now, but we need a lot more information, is the solar field. It was clear from the application and from the discussion at the Z B A that that solar field is huge. Well, you know, it's going to generate power well beyond what is required for the apartments. So that they've sized it multiple times beyond what they require. And the power is not going to be directly used by the apartments, as I stated. It's actually going to be put back into the grid, and they're going to draw power from the grid. So they will be, in some manner, they will be getting credit for what they're putting into the grid. I don't know if they're going to be directly selling it, getting credits, combination of both. That wasn't clear at the meeting. There's a lot more information we need. But it was clear that, it appears that that field is much larger, as I said, you know, than one would put in if they were simply offsetting, as I said at the meeting. They wanted to get to this net zero on the carbon footprint and green and so forth. And that's great. Other comprehensive permitting plans have done this, but they've done it by putting, you know, arrays over the buildings, or arrays over the carports, or arrays in that manner. Here, they're going to clear a lot of trees, a lot of ground, put in a huge array that's multiple times, going to generate multiple times. And I think we need to bring that forward, that we are concerned that what is happening here is that under this comprehensive plan, and it wasn't even clear at the meeting why this was included in it, it seems like they're taking the opportunity to go around the standard process to put in a commercial field. It really looks like a commercial field. And then on top of that, on top of that, there was this whole discussion about this agricultural building in the middle of it is not an agricultural building. In fact, from the meeting, you can't tell what it is. You know, they, in fact, they don't know sure what it's going to be, but it's clear it's not an agricultural building. It's going to have batteries in it, and it's going to use some of the power. It's going to, you know, grow blueberries, was one thing he said. I think quite understand why you would need blueberries at this, where all the apartments were. So to me, it sounded, again, that this is a commercial enterprise. And the second piece that sort of reinforces that is that they spoke about the ownership, and the ownership of the apartments and so forth. And that land is under the requirement that it be a dividend company. No, I didn't say that right. But then the other piece is not. The other piece, they're not sure what it's going to be right now. Could be a for-profit, could be a not-for-profit, could be a corporation, you know. It was very little clarity there. So that whole solar field, you know, I think needs to be challenged as to, does it truly belong as part of this comprehensive plan? You know, the attorney that you hired, the town hired, you know, spoke to that and actually noted that, and I can't remember exact words, but she spoke to the fact that that may have to be scaled back to be simply the amount of energy that the apartments are going to use, and then it matches and it makes sense. But that, you know, again, I don't know exactly what she said, so I don't want to, I'm not saying it may be right. But in her opinion, this went well beyond that. And I think the audience and the board feels, the Z B A feels that way too, that we're really entering into a commercial enterprise here that's been slipped under this comprehensive plan. And I think that needs to be separated out. I liked what your attorney said about, hey, let's carve out the piece that's equal to the energy the plan's going to use, and the rest should come back to us and be treated under the normal process as we would treat any other large solar field, and let's truly look at its impact. So that's a lot of words, I know that. But I think that we should at least start to set the foundation of these concerns around that solar enterprise, when I think of as more of a commercial enterprise and just a solar field. So that in the future, you know, and leave it open, you know, the letter should say that, you know, we, as more information is disclosed as meetings go forward, we reserve the right to come back with more comments and so forth. I think the Z B A would find it beneficial. You know, we want to send comments forward that are beneficial. I think the Z B A would find this beneficial, based on the discussions that went on at that meeting, to reinforce questions that they want to ask and areas that they want to look into. I know they're going to be hiring individuals to do a peer review, and maybe they'll look at this too. I don't know, I'm not as knowledgeable. But I think, you know, staying to the, Ralph, the three areas you mentioned that are far within the planning, I think that's how I would encompass them at this time. Maybe you can draft something, we can look at it at the next meeting. But I do think we should send at least our initial comments forward before the next Z B A, so it can be read into the records. And I'm sure it'll be, is it going to be in the Old Town Hogan? Yeah, because I'm sure there'll be a large crowd. I thought, you know, the attorney for the Friends of Peter's Pond, I think that's the group, I thought he, I brought forward some great points on all the items, including the ones that we're responsible for. I thought the town attorney, in her recap, did a phenomenal job on that too. And the questioning by the Z B A, I thought was outstanding. There were some members there that were really, really digging into it. So whatever we can do to help them be successful, I think would be beneficial. Thank you.
So if I can piggyback on some of the remarks that Jeff has made, which speak to this feeling like a commercial solar project. Part of that is the battery, the B E S, the battery storage system. And I read through, it's one hundred and seventy-three pages, their application. I actually read the whole entire thing over the last two weeks. I also, full disclosure, work for an industrial electrical company, so this is in my wheelhouse. And I understand what this looks like. I understand what it's going to take to construct it, and I understand what it's going to take to maintain it. And I know how noisy they are. And I didn't find anything in their plan that talked about soundproofing, noise mitigation. It operates very hot when it's either charging or discharging from the grid. And in order to not have a meltdown, it has to be cooled, and that's what's making the noise.
The battery, the battery storage. On the battery, okay. Just my own clarification, thank you.
Yeah, so, yeah, the solar panels, I consider to be a completely separate animal than the battery storage. You don't need the battery storage with the solar panels if you're hooked directly to your little microgrid to, you know, to kind of store that electricity. They also, in their application, are detailing that they're going to be producing more energy than they can use internally. And for that reason, they want to connect to the macrogrid, which is basically ever-source. Well, that's a two-way street at that point. So now that little battery storage, the B E S module, is operating as basically a warehouse for electricity. So not only can they push electricity out to the grid, they can pull it back. And so that is a for-profit company, taking advantage of backwardization or contangos, where they buy energy at a low price, pull it onto that little B E S system, wait for the prices to go up, then they push it back out for a profit. So I just feel like very concerned that this commercial endeavor is being sort of packaged with a housing project that I know that the Cape is desperate for the blue force, the workhouse, sorry, workforce housing. I just, I'm very concerned at this other aspect that's being sort of lumped in with that. And again, to reiterate what Jeff commented on, if they were simply, you know, right sizing their own needs to be net zero and not sort of operating or, you know, packaging this for-profit endeavor in there, I feel like it might not be as frightening as it is.
Yeah, I just want to, you know, obviously, I agree with both what, with both Jeff and Melissa. I do think it would be great to have additional housing. It's certainly part of a really important piece of this town and the livelihood and the future of this town, especially to have affordable housing, not just talking about like the eighty percent median apartments, but also, you know, just having market rates available for workforce and for young people to move here, because we're seeing numbers across the board go down where businesses can't sustain, and the schools are losing, you know, the numbers that they need. But one of the things that I felt like was lacking in the presentation was sort of why they're head, and I agree that there's like this commercial plan that sort of feels a little bit like it's being disguised by a housing endeavor. And through the forty B application, they're able to kind of skirt some of the things, although they brought, they drew attention to their intentions to really be part of the growth of the town. But they never really addressed like why we're going to have, you know, this huge acreage cut down and put settler panels where clearly the energy that's going to be produced is going to exceed what the housing needs, and why they didn't consider alternatives like over, you know, parking or the, what is it, twenty thousand square feet of roof? You know, why they're not going to do solar panels there. Like we, sort of, there was a lot of missing information, and I would really like to draw that out.
Can I, just, you reminded me of a couple of things. If I could just add, and again, these comments, again, we can discuss them. I don't know if we want to put this in there. And I actually spoke with Ralph and Leanne about this. I walked away from that meeting during a discussion on the solar, like the audience was left in the impression that we had reviewed and approved that solar field. You know, they came in and presented it. It was informal, and we appreciated them coming in, and we were able to ask questions, we learned things about it. But I think it's important that we document that we have not reviewed and approved this, that we have simply, you know, were given the opportunity to hear from them directly, but we did not, you know, give them back things that said, go change this, go change that. You know, there was, you know, we are not the authority that is reviewing and approving this. So maybe they didn't mean to intend to do that. I don't know, I'm not implying they did, but boy, I walked away from there thinking- did, but boy, I walked away from there thinking, and I know others I talked to felt the same way, like that's the way they left it was, we had already reviewed and approved it, therefore it was going to be easy for the ZBA. It was interesting about the housing, they, you know, they commented about the housing plan, they commented about the local comprehensive plan. What they failed to mention, which is important to me and I think it's important, I know it was important to the different committees that worked on those and brought them forward to this board. And that is, it wasn't about just housing, it was about affordable housing. It was your comment that, that reminded me of this. You know, that term wasn't used. And when you think about 144 units, only 25% are going to be affordable. Now, they're only required to provide 25%, they could provide more if they wanted. And they're going after the 80% median income. So it's not the low income, it's not the individuals that, you know, that, that, you know, are more service oriented, they're not going to be able to afford these affordable. And then the ones at a market rate, market rate apartments, if you've read any articles, it was interesting, a gentleman stood up and talked about an article in the Globe about market rate hous, homes to buy and you can't afford to buy them. Well, you can't afford to stay in market rate apartments either. Yes, we need more rental on the Cape, but I'm, I, I'm concerned that we're, this is not going to open, you know, it up enough rental units to the individuals that truly needed on the Cape. That's why towns and cities are looking at reintroducing rent control because market rate rents are unaffordable. And that word affordable never get, it got used, but it was, it was disconnected from the work that we've done. When they talked about the housing plan, when they talked about the local comprehensive plan, they disconnected the word affordable, just talked about housing. And we need to bring that back and recognize that, yeah, this is important, I support it, we need it, but not in this manner, it needs to be affordable. The other thing that got, and my mind got missed, was that a number of years ago, I think the name of the company was Design Studio that did the study for us on Route 130. And at that time, we went out to the residents of Sandwich and asked them, what kind of housing do you want it to look like when we introduce, well, at that time we called middle housing, you know, the apartments, the starter apartment, places for people to go when they're first starting out. They did not want to see the type of housing buildings that are in this plan. They wanted to see things that looked and kept the character of Sandwich. So it could be high-density housing, it could be multiple units in a building, but they wanted it to keep with the character. And as part of that study, what they did was they sent out pictures and we asked the residents to pick the different pictures that we're keeping. And the ones that came back are the ones that looked like cottages, you know, and had that flow to them and had that distinction to them and had those, you know, porches and so forth to them. They weren't these things that, and use my term, that looked like barracks. They, 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 they had greenery around them, they didn't have apartment, you know, pocket spaces that went right up to them. So it's, I think they utilized some elements of what we've done to reinforce and to promote what they're putting forward, but they missed some very important elements relative to what the residents of Sandwich are looking for. One, it'd be affordable and two, it'd be keeping with the character of Sandwich. And I don't see that currently in these plans. It may be, and I think this is where the ZBA can use the help of the boards and reinforcement, that the developer will work with them to achieve that. But at this time, you know, it's not there. If you go back to the local comprehensive plan and you read the comments, you'd see that people want that. They want walkable communities, they want greenery, they want keeping in a, it was so important, you know, the number one, it was probably the number two thing that we heard, maybe third thing we heard, was this idea of not losing Sandwich's character. And I don't see an alignment with this, on that. So, thank you, I had forgotten about that, you mentioned the affordability. Now, again, we don't want to put all of this in there, but I think it's something that we need to continue to reinforce. I support the need for this, I support, and this board has done a phenomenal job over the years introducing ADUs, looking at 10% on the cottage conversions and other elements as we go forward. And we've made the information available about what the residents want to see through the local comprehensive plan and through the studio design work. And I don't see that reflected in this plan. Thank you.
Is there a way that the zoning board could ask that the solar part be separated from the housing part as part of the, I mean, could you deny that?
Yeah, we're, our, our town council is reviewing it. The applicants have it as an ancillary element to, to the housing. And as clearly pointed out at this board, it, it is producing way more electricity, way more energy than, than required. With the comprehensive permit, applicants are, are limited to, if they have an ancillary element, the, the, the profit number they can make is only 20%. You know, it's a decent amount, but, but it seems like this would far exceed it. So we have to look at, at, at some numbers and then, then either they would have to scale it back or be conditioned accordingly because any profit over, over the 20% goes back to the state, which may, may not be a bad thing, it could be used for more, you know, future, future housing. But, 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 but again, this is, the size and scope of this, of the solar field as it is in relation to the affordable housing element is just something that all of us are just trying, trying to figure out. And, and I guess that's why we brought in Judy Barrett from Barrett, Barrett Planning Group, she's for technical assistance and, and town council because, you know, we want to make sure that we, you know, we work cooperatively with the developers in the town together. So, so when we do get a comprehensive permit at the end, it, it works the best it can. So.
So if it's ancillary, the electricity produced by the solar field is not going to be directed to the apartments, is correct, it's going to be pushed out and then the apartments can get, do they get a benefit?
They, they are supposed to.
They are.
Right, so the ancillary elements should, are there to provide benefit to the housing project, so.
Enough to consider it an ancillary.
Yes. Right, so that's why when, generally speaking, I, I guess the best example, local example we have is, is Brightside Village, which is on Route, Route 130. They have a 300 kilowatt, I'm just joking, because megawatt, 300 megawatt would be huge, 300, I think 300 kilowatt solar, solar array, which helps support the Brightside, Brightside Village. And, and that's when we, you know, we brought up, you know, canopy solar, rooftop, rooftop solar, you know, it's supposed to be enough energy generation to support the housing and, and elements of the housing, like, you know, they refer to wastewater because that, that's a big energy consumer and, and the agriculture.
Exceed the 20%.
Then, then you're.
Subsequent to the approval, is it monitored or is it?
Again, that's, yeah, that's something, again, yeah, that's something we would, we would have to look at and, and we would condition, we would condition it in the, in the comprehensive permit. It, at first, it goes to the, back to the state, so, so, yeah, yeah. So we would, so we would review the conditioning element on that and, and, and condition it accordingly. If, right, so if it go, if it, if it goes forward as a 4.8 megawatt, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? So it's, oh, yep.
I would just say that I attended the meeting on the ninth and I almost walked away with more questions than I walked in with. It just seemed they were generally somewhat ill-prepared. There were a lot of things that they still need to figure out and they just didn't actually have some answers for some of the ZBA board's questions. So, yeah, I, I agree, I think the solar thing is a problem. It's, seems like it's maybe like a side business they're going to have to, you know, on top of the, the rent collections. And I'm not sure if you might know, this is maybe not in our purview, but do you, are they going to be putting a local preference on the housing units?
They, the, it has, was not indicated in, in, in the application. And Eileen, I think, I mean, you have fairly accurate assessment, there were some elements of the application that were missing that normally are, are, are present when a, when a comprehensive permit is presented to the ZBA. As you know, town council's a chief among them, was the, was the traffic study. Second among, usually the, the, the engineers, the applicant's engineer is, is present. So just, just those two initial things were, were, were missing. So, so, you know, that's why we didn't continue it to the next meeting, we gave them a sort of a month stretch to, to start getting those, to be able to put those elements together and, and present to the ZBA.
And for your benefit and Nicole's, we had a presentation about a year ago and a gentleman from the company that is going to be operating the solar part of the project was here and spoke to us and answered questions. And granted, we could argue that things could change between then and now, but this gentleman represented that he worked for a company that is private equity owned and that they were building this solar project with contracts already in place to sell the electricity generated there. So that's, you know, just, then to see sort of the scale of the project, it, it's kind of now those pieces are, the dots are connected.
Yeah, I mean, I also, I mean, again, not in our purview, but, you know, with the, those huge leach fields looming over the ponds, that to me is a little worrisome, you know, and what would the liability be there should there be a failure and, you know, the ponds are polluted or something, you know, there's. But I, I also feel too, like our next meeting is August 6th and then the ZBA meeting isn't until the 13th. So our next meeting, we won't be any more informed than we are this evening to be making any kind of comments or.
I, I, I think if it is the prerogative of, of the board, we could, we could put together some of the comments that were brought up this evening and, and you could, you could look at that, review it, and if you want to put that forward, that's good, but that, that in no way precludes you from, you know, from this board at a, at a future meeting to put it on the agenda. And as things come up, especially as they are related to what falls under the purview of the planning board, that you could, that you could, yeah, you may provide additional comment for that.
Do you have a sense of just the overall project, how long this process is going to take?
No. I, I, to be honest with you, I think, yeah, I think. I think, I think that it will most likely take the full six months or, and maybe an extension to that. And, and state law requires that a decision has to be made within, within six months, but unless mutually agreed upon by both, by both parties. So again, you know, we have a, a, a very good team on the town side willing to work with the developers. We have, again, you know, a, a, a good, a good ZBA in place, we have town council and technical assistants and, and, you know, you know, we put it, you know, we're just putting it out there and, and, and we hope, hopefully we could work together to bring forward the elements that, that were starting to get requested on, on the ninth. One, you know, one of the issues that was put forward, if, if you recall, if you recall, their, their wastewater methodology really hasn't been hammered out, hammered out yet. So that's, you know, that's one of the things that will go before, when it's presented, that will go for, for peer review. So what we, what we're doing, peer review is, just a quick explanation, the, the, actually, the, the town makes a request to the applicant to have experts in certain fields just review what they've, what they've put forward. So we're looking at getting a peer, peer review right now for, for engineering and we may get one also for, for the traffic study. But I think one which we would have to take a significant look at and might be the pro forma as it's associated with the, with the solar field, so.
And the battery storage system.
And the battery, the batteries. And I'm glad you're on this board, Melissa, because I do, to us it's sort of, okay, you know, it's, we would have not have known that. I gotta, I just have to emphasize that, my note, battery storage is, it's just a complete.
ESS is the acronym, battery energy storage system.
Yeah.
And the batteries are the size of tractor-trailer trucks. And they're usually in something that large, I can even begin to speculate how many they're going to be using of those, but it's going to be more than one.
Yeah, they have the container for the one on 130 across the street, they had that big container, we talked about the coloring of it.
Yeah.
And things like that, and they did address the sound, yeah.
Sorry. Just one other question I'm thinking of, you mentioned, you know, why aren't they putting the solar on the roof? Is that because they're already pretty close to their height restriction?
So, height restriction for, for a comprehensive permit can be waived, they're actually asking for a waiver of, of, of the height restriction because it's, it exceeds 35 feet, not tremendously so, but, 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 but they are requesting a, for the, for the apartment style buildings, they're requesting a height waiver.
I was going to ask, who pays for the peer reviews?
The applicant.
The applicant does. So you make a request of the applicant?
Yeah.
And they have to approve it?
Yes.
Do they, do you select the, the individual?
We select, yes, yeah.
Okay, but the applicant pays? Thank you.
The applicant pays, yeah, yeah. And, and just, also, we, we received the grant from MHP, Mass Housing Production, I always, partnership, thank you, I always forget the acronym, to, that's how we got the technical assistance, so we, we, we did receive a grant for that, so.
For the council to assist.
No, for, 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 no, for Judy Barrett, yeah, yeah, that's technical assistance, yeah. We can never get enough to cover lawyer fees, you know.
All right, so then I guess we'll put them in together for next meeting and we can all re-review it and discuss it and, and bring it forward.
Yeah. Just, just for confirmation, we're gonna, the elements we were gonna see is, I know you missed, you had mentioned talking about the housing production plan, how the board supports, supports the housing production plan, but, but to note that, that there's the element of affordability. We're going to bring in the, the, the character as it relates to design studios, that was mentioned, and then, then the A and R, follow the process, scenic road, follow the process, the one and a half, and, and then the, you know, speak with the tree warden, and then, you know, the solar, how it, how it appears to be a commercial entity, not, not supportive, not supportive of the housing production and, and battery storage is separate from, separate from solar. Sort of along that line, we're going to put together a memo, you know, we'll flesh it out and, and present it to the board. So hopefully it, you'll approve it and if we could forward it to the ZBA for the meeting on the 13th.
Thank you. Next, the board discussion is authorized agent appointment.
And as you remember, every year we, we authorize the chair and vice chair to sign off on the A and Rs, so we're just one, one signature required. So we're just looking for a motion from the board to, to allow it. And we do, and we name, name the individuals, right, we don't leave a, it's not a, it's not chair, vice chair that'll make life easy, we just, it would be Jennifer and Melissa. So the chair would, the, the motion would be to, to allow Jennifer and Melissa as the authorized agents.
Can we, can we move? Somebody else has to move other than myself or Melissa?
No, you could. No, you could, no, you could do it, you could, you could move it, so.
Well, I, I make a motion to make myself as Jennifer's chair and Melissa as vice chair, authorized signatories.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes, Steve? Okay.
Okay.
Next is the May twenty twenty-four signature sheet.
Yeah, sort of on the heels of that, if everybody has to sign, we, everyone who's present, if you can, please sign, it's a triple kit. Everybody doesn't have a pen.
So next on the agenda is other matters not reasonably anticipated.
Yeah, we, we do have a, one matter, and this is a, in, in relation to the June, the June eighteenth meeting, I know some questions had arisen regarding the procedure as it relates to open meeting law, I put the question forward to the, to our town council, and they provided us with, with an opinion on, on the June eighteenth meeting, and there's some, also, Jeff had two, two other questions, we just received these today, so what I'm gonna do is I'll, I'll pass this out for you to look at, and then if you just take a quick glance at it, and if we could have a full, we could put it out the next meeting agenda, so we could have a full discussion as it relate, as it relates to this. Again, it's, it's not a, it's not a listed agenda item, so we could, we're limited, we have a limited discussion on what's being presented.
Can we take this one to Rita, will you?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I guess we'll just take this back and address it at our next meeting, and it'll be put on the agenda?
Yep.
Okay. No one has any other matters not reasonably anticipated? I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second that motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, have a great night, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd stay cool out there.
It's my pocket personality, no.